I call this meeting to order. And will you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Changes to the agenda.
Marcia, this is Laurel. I have a change to the agenda.
Okay.
Please add a message from the board before the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Laurel. We need to build on that, don't we?
We could build on this change to the agenda.
I don't think we have to do it. Okay, I just want to make sure. All right. All right, thanks, Laurel. Any other changes or are we ready to move? Okay. All right, good. So first up, the first 15 minutes court policy is our public comments. Nick, if you want to just remind people how they can be in touch and I don't know if we need to read the whole policy, but maybe a synopsis.
Yeah, of course. So this is, Nick, a little handy, just letting you guys all know that there are three main ways in which you can comment for the public comment section. We are going to keep it to 15 minutes, so we'll try to make sure that everybody keeps their comments brief and to the point. Try to keep it at about a minute. So there are three ways you can, you know, put that message in. First one is if you would like to speak, feel free to go through the participants tab. If you're using that, you can raise your hand. That way we can address you, give you the power to speak. And then the other two ways, you can use the chat window. And by using that, you can, you know, type in a message and that will, while it might not necessarily be dragged due to time constraints, we will catalog all public comments that way and we will include them in the minutes and then we'll be sent to the board. Third way is you can send a text message to 603-933-0973. And I'll put that in the chat window for everybody. So again, those are the three methods. In any case, if you could please use your first and last name and your town of residence, that would be greatly appreciated. So we're going to start public comments. Just again, try to keep them brief, try to keep them civil, keep them on to points that are on the agenda. And I guess we can start whenever we're ready.
Okay. 15 minutes has begun. I don't know if the... You're getting any raised hands raised thing yet?
We do have one.
Okay.
All right, so Mark Haley, I'm gonna push it aloud to talk, so you should...
Thank you. So my name is Mark Haley. I live in Keene and I teach eighth grade English at JRMES also. I just wanted to ask the board to reconsider or revisit school board policy BHC, which restricts communication between the staff and the school board unless it's asked through the superintendent. I certainly can understand and sympathize with not wanting a free-for-all of emails to board members, but I feel like we could all be better served with a direct forum for communication outside of public board meetings where staff members can share concerns, questions, successes, that sort of thing with board members without having to first go through.
Thank you, Mark, for your comments. Do we have any other, like, raised hands or texts or...?
I don't have anything at this moment. So just to let everybody know that's on the digital meeting, we do have two public comments sections, one now and then we have one toward the end of the meeting. So more than happy to also, you know, take comments toward the end. We did give one via chat, so since we have the time, you don't want me to read it out loud or...?
Sure.
Okay, so this one's from Rebecca de Grandprey of Jaffrey. She says, "In looking at other districts' return-to-school plans, there are clear-cut guidelines given for when schools should switch to fully remote learning due to community transmission numbers. I'm wondering when our district will think this part through and will confer with medical experts to create these guidelines as part of our plan."
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
All right, and I got one more hand raised. Shawna Smith?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you so much. Shawna Smith, resident of Ridge. I've taught in this district for 14 years. It has been my pleasure to do so. I love being an educator here. These past few months, though, have been very emotional for me. When we first discussed the framework at the school board meeting, I had asked the question, will teachers have to choose between their health, family's health, and their job if they are unable to teach in person? We unfortunately never received an answer as to whether or not our district would work with us to accommodate teachers who were faced with this dilemma. Because we have had no answer, many teachers have had to retire early or unfortunately, in some cases, resign because as a district, we were either unable or unwilling to accommodate them. Other districts in this area have found ways. As a colleague, a parent, and as a resident, I want to thank those teachers for your years of dedication to this district. I wish we could have problems solved to keep you here. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. Are there any others?
One more came in via chat. So we have Deb Rainey of Harrisville, also a teacher at Ridge Memorial School. She says, "I support Rebecca's request to establish benchmarks for when to trigger remote learning based on the number of cases in a building and in the community."
Okay, thank you, Deb, for your comments.
All right, anyone want to put out a last call?
If we're not getting any, then we can, they can do the next one.
All right, so yeah, again, it looks like we've kind of slowed down. No hands raised, no chats, no texts or anything of that nature. So I think at this time we'll... We got one, we got one more, so we'll read that, but then that'll, we'll move off to public comments just so we don't continue to move. But again, we do have a second period, so chat comments can enter other things come up, we can address those later. So this one's from Laura Harding of Jaffrey, also a JRMES teacher. She says, "I would like to know if the board is aware that other surrounding districts have fully supported their teachers in remote teaching, if it's supported their families or themselves."
Okay. Thank you, Laurel, for your comments.
All right, so again, that will conclude public comment number one. We're gonna move on to the next items in the agenda.
Okay, so next up is the message from the board. So I have a statement prepared that I'll be reading. "We've received many letters, emails, public comments, and private comments from our community. We've received them from district staff, students, parents, community members, and public officials. Each has a unique perspective and shares a different life impact. Some are fearful, some not too concerned, and many see it as an opportunity for change. Yet there is a commonality in that: This pandemic has affected everyone. The board's statutory duty is to provide elementary and secondary education to all learners within our district. To that end, our task is to resume education using the New Hampshire Department of Education, New Hampshire Grade's K-12 Back-to-School Guidance. We formed an ad hoc committee that was comprised of a broad spectrum of stakeholders. This team included teachers, nurses, parents, and other community members. The team conducted surveys of district stakeholders with immense participation and response. The team used this data to create the 2020-21 reopening framework. The reopening framework is a product of months of work by over 40 stakeholders, many of them, again, teachers, nurses. I think there was some support staff was on it as well. And it includes the input of over 1,300 stakeholders. We believe we are following the best path for the vast majority of our stakeholders. We understand that we cannot satisfy 100% of them. Our intent is to provide a safe environment for CDC, New Hampshire Department of Education, the New Hampshire DHHS, and ANA. Our intent is to provide the best education we can using our great teachers. Our intent is to restore the social and emotional well-being of our learners that was interrupted by distance learning. Our intent is to help parents by returning to a routine that is as normal as possible. We can't do it alone, and we need the support of everyone in the district. We're confident that together, we'll be successful in providing the best experience for our learners. We are very proud of and are listening to our teachers, nurses, counselors, support staff, and administration. We applaud their dedication, adaptability, creativity, professionalism, and can-do attitude. We believe in our entire staff and their ability to help us overcome the obstacles we are all facing. We believe that they will provide the best education possible to our learners." And that's the statement from the board about where we are and what we're trying to do.
Chair?
John McPerpy.
Thank you. Thank you for reading the statement. Sorry, I hope this isn't considered bad for the call.
It is.
Well... All right, I'm being told it is... Okay. Excuse me. Like everybody else, I'm not used to talking with these masks on. I'd like to thank Shawna Smith for her statement about our retired teachers. I know everybody on the school board feels that way. We're grateful to them for their service and proud of them. And sorry for people who had to leave under these circumstances. It's a very difficult year. And as a board, our number one goal as a board has been for a number of years is safety. Safety of our students, safety of our staff. And we're gonna continue to work with the superintendent and the principals and administration to do everything we can to make sure that that continues to be a priority.
Thank you, John. All right. Onto our superintendent's report.
Okay, while Nick is getting that all linked up, basically the superintendent report is largely just some pictures and some photos. Sometimes they speak a little bit more than what a bunch of, you know, paragraphs and sentences and so forth say. What you'll see in this report is just some pictures of various classrooms as we're getting set up. Not everything's there perfectly yet, but just making sure that the social distance is there. You can see there will be some pictures there that show some creativity that some teachers put forward as they were setting up their classrooms. And then also just a little bit of a look at some outside spaces or educational opportunities. It does look like that's kind of jumbled up, so...
Maybe just click on the pictures.
Yeah. Want me to send you another doc?
I know, I'm just gonna put it in the doc.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm working with not my computer. We set this one up specifically for school board meetings, so...
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. So while that's going on, I just wanted to thank a lot of individuals. Certainly, the, at the top of the list really is, I want to thank the nurses, the school nurses. They have been an incredible support throughout all of this and have just done a remarkable job with their research, with their preparedness, and with, I think, their guidance going both right early on, right now, through this process, but also I know going forward. Each one of them is going to be the COVID coordinator in their school. And I'm excited about the leadership that they're gonna provide there. Earlier last week, the nurses put together a brochure with a lot of helpful information that was sent out, and their attention to detail and their clarity and their really strong research is just very much appreciated. Other individuals that I'd like to thank, I want to thank Heather Lindstad and Anne Marie Oshiac. The two of them, there may be other adults, but these are the two that I am aware of. Spent a day last week working with a bunch of our juniors and seniors to form a leadership team that is going to be, or that's in the process of actually developing some supports for our incoming freshmen and to be able to not just do that for this kind of short period of time, the beginning, but throughout the school year. And so something that, when I saw the students in our school, they were so excited, so thrilled that they were going, that one, that they were here in the building, but two, that they were going to be part of something, I think, very significant. And so I want to thank those two adults, those two professionals, for the work that they've done. Professional development this week continues. Today, I know that the middle school, high school had had some conversations regarding personal learning plans. The elementary school had professional development on ZERN, the math program that was adopted tomorrow and perhaps the next day. But I think tomorrow for both schools in the elementary, they're gonna be working with the Harris Center on outdoor learning. And so that's exciting. Things that I think that families would want to know is schedules. What's my child's schedule looking like? And so while I believe that the elementary schedules or communications have been going out by the teachers, there was a little bit of a stall with, in some of that for the secondary. Those have gone out and people should be receiving those, hopefully tomorrow, maybe the next day. But certainly, if anyone has any questions, reaching out to the school is definitely appropriate. Sports, been a lot of, a lot of controversy around the state about extracurricular activities and athletics in general. I was just down at the Seacoast yesterday and there's quite a stir about which schools are gonna be doing football and which aren't gonna be doing it. And there's so many different kind of opinions out there. And we've opted, you know, we don't have football, so it's an easy decision for us, but we've opted to have as robust an experience as possible. And so last week, we started with high school athletics. And this week, tonight, today actually, we start with middle school athletics. And so we have some guidelines that have been sent out and I check in regularly with the athletic director to see how things are going and certainly to make certain that our guidelines are followed during that timeframe. But it is good to see the students out here right now practicing. We don't know what a season would look like. Certainly, it's gonna be very different if and when we do have any competition outside of our kind of intramural setting here. You know, it's likely to be just local, not traveling across the state or anything of that nature. But I know that several schools are still working on their plans. Others have not decided to go and do any athletics at this point in time. Others are still looking to see what they can do to phase it in. Others have chosen to do maybe a couple of sports, like golf and field hockey or something to that nature. The pictures you see, so it is up there, thank you. Okay, so you can kind of scroll up a little bit to the RMS classroom, the JRMES classroom. Just, I thought was really neat, I went in, I was going around the schools today and saw the RMS classroom and this particular teacher has, you know, laid out some creative seating, socially-distanced on mats that are also, it's kind of socially-distanced. And perhaps, I don't know what the intent is entirely. Maybe these mats will be used to kind of roll up and be brought outside to outdoor learning as well, maybe underneath the tents. I'm not entirely sure. Haven't spoken with the teacher, but I was really, it was kind of a neat setup. So it was neat to see the creativity. If we go down, you see a little more standard seating arrangements. And down further to page two, this is a picture right here of the construction trades project, an inside picture and an outside picture. As we had some difficulties last year getting some of this up and going, we did have some support from a local company to build kind of the frame of this so that the rest of it can be finished by our construction trades program. So we're excited to see that coming up this year. And that's a great outdoor learning experience right here on our campus. And lastly, I just wanted to, well, there's two things here, really. One, to thank Milipor Cigna. They donated this past Friday a little over, about 300, 310 face shields, 1,200 packages of kind of 15-count wipes and 600 one-ounce hand sanitizers, over 60% alcohol. And so they, I told them that, you know, we'd take them in here, but that we could not disperse or utilize them until we had a acceptance from the board of this donation. The donation is, they have indicated it's, I mean, they probably purchased things significantly in bulk, but it was around $600 or so, maybe $700. And so that is something for us to consider tonight. I'd be happy to take any questions or...
And will we accept the donation?
Thank you, Laurel. Patty, thank you, Patty. So, and we're all in the same room, so we don't need to do a roll call vote. All those in favor of accepting the Milipor donation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstain? All right, passes 700. Thanks, Milipor.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Who writes the thank you letter?
That would be, that could come from my office, so it'd either be...
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, so any other comments, questions on the superintendent's report? Or are we ready to move on to the consent? Looking around, not seeing any. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for your report, Ruben.
Did you just say consent agenda?
Sorry, what?
Did you just say the consent?
Consent?
Sorry, I need to pull the August 24th public and non-public meeting.
Okay. So we're pulling the August 24th off, both public and non?
Yep.
Any other changes?
I don't know if I need to...
On the stipend report? You want to pull that one off?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we're pulling off the non-public and public for August 24th as well as the stipend list from the consent agenda.
And will we accept the consent agenda as modified?
Thank you, Laurel. John, second, thank you. And so all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. And that passes 700. So let's now go to the August 24th public and non-public.
And will we accept the August 24th public and non-public meeting?
Thank you, Laurel.
I'll second.
Heidi, thank you. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against and abstain.
I abstain.
Thank you, so that passes 601. And now to the stipend list. The motion?
Will we accept the stipend list?
Okay. Thank you, Alicia.
Second.
Thank you, Patty. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain.
Aye.
That passes 601. Thank you. Okay, we're on to our action items. First one, retention of unassigned fund balance. I don't know if we need a discussion or a motion.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Okay.
Basically, what this is, is by law, every year, we can set money aside based on emergency needs. Typically, we retain $200,000, $250,000 every year. We're limited to 2.5% of the current fiscal year's net assessment, so we can choose to retain up to $437,000.
I was gonna...
$107,000.
Chipped that half. Okay.
And I would say that I think we should retain the maximum that we can because I think that there is some uncertainty this year.
Yes.
More than usual.
A little bit. Okay.
I agree.
So for, so does everybody understand, this is not an increase in any taxes. What this does is it retains the money that we, the surplus that we had from last year, and it will be returned to the taxpayers if it's not used in emergency. And by emergency, we need to get the approval of the New Hampshire Department of Education in order to spend any of that money. However, with everything that's going on with COVID-19 and the additional expenses that the district has had to incur, we want to ensure that we have emergency funds available if they're needed. I have just a question. Laurel, were you proposing that we retain the maximum for $37?
You bet, right down to the $107.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, so Laurel, you made the motion.
I guess that's what I do.
Yeah. And John, you'll second that? All right, so all in favor of retaining the maximum amount for emergency purposes, please say aye.
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 Aye. And oppose, abstain. All right, passes 700. Next up is the reopening guidebook, the COVID-19 reopening guidebook for the elementary schools, the grade school and Ridge, and Laurel. So we need a motion?
Should we put these two together?
Well, I was gonna say, do we want to? I think that would save a bit of time. So shall we have a motion for the two COVID-19 reopening guidebooks?
I have some questions. We're gonna try to make the motion first and then discuss.
Generally, you're supposed to make the motion and then have something discussed, because that's now on the table. Okay, thank you, Heidi. And then you usually get, you'll second that, Alicia. And now we're open for discussion.
Okay. So I, this is Heidi speaking. I'm just concerned about the the bathroom usage at JRMES CHS. I'm wondering how, so there's not supposed to be one and one... the bathroom usage of JRMS CHS. I'm wondering how, so there's not supposed to be one and one person in a bathroom at a time. I'm just wondering how the students are, you know, managing that. Is there, will there be monitoring going on in the hallways, or does the student enter the bathroom and see someone is there? It just, it didn't seem very clear about how that's going to be managed.
Nick, do you have the ability, I believe David is in the audience. I think it would be best if, if it would be okay for him to, it's up to the board chair, of course.
Of course.
Yeah.
Go to the source.
He just raised his hand, I was just getting ready to clip him. Okay, so that's a great question. Right now, what we're looking at, we're looking at renting some porta potties to supplement the facilities that are inside the high school. The middle school portion of the building is okay, that we, there's enough facilities there. Many of the bathrooms are already single occupancy bathrooms. The ones that are multiple occupancy bathrooms, there's no exterior door and there's only two stalls within those, so it's pretty easy to sort of lop those stalls off with a lock and keep them from being accessed and then restrict it to one. And they're sort of embedded within the teams. It's the high school side that we were a little concerned with the number of facilities there. Though with the addition of some rented porta potty facilities out near the tents that could be accessed by learners there, as well as having some additional monitoring in the hallways, those sorts of things will allow for us to keep the bathrooms at one person. We're also looking at potentially removing the exterior doors on some of the restrooms that have, you know, all the stalls are facing in a specific direction, which is not into the doorway itself, but at a wall that's, that's not seeable from the outside. And with only one person being in the restroom at a time, there wouldn't be a privacy concern with them utilizing if we left the only stall available, the furthest one from that door that faces away from the door. So that's another option we're looking at to keep supervision abilities for the bathrooms without causing any sort of a concern with privacy and making sure we have the staff to monitor that.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and then I just noticed in the, in the JRMS CHS handbook, there was mention of, of course, if there were to be an emergency, masks would stay on, but then students would exit out of the nearest, you know, exit. It just, the elementary schools don't have that in there. You know, I don't know. I'm assuming it would be the same, but it's just not in the elementary handbook, so. Seems like there should be some consistency about how to deal with emergencies.
Right.
Okay. We can...
So if, if the handbook is silent, does it mean normal?
Normal procedure.
Normal for emergency, but normal emergency procedures will be followed?
Yeah, if silent, then the normal emergencies procedures will be followed. We can certainly add a section in there. I can just ask them to, you know, put a blurb in there about that, that would be consistent. If that's something that we'd like to do.
Right. I mean, we certainly can do it, and again, consistency, that's fine. I mean, I think it's probably implied, because if you're indoors, the masks are on, but but maybe, there's nothing wrong with stating it either.
Yeah. It just, you know, really, I think it's pretty common sense, it just, I just noticed that it was in one and not the other.
Okay. John?
I'm just wondering if there's any way to turn up the volume on the speaker there that Nick has set up for us? Or if not, if maybe we can think about next time, trying to get something a little more...
An external speaker? For us? Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm at my limit. But yeah, certainly next time, we'll, we'll get something so that we can get some more audio to the other side of the room.
Okay, good.
Alright.
My comment on the framework is that I think it's imperative that every family sit down and read it together, because a lot of questions are...
The guidebooks.
The guidebooks, I'm sorry, not framework. With the framework too, but I think it's, there's a lot of questions I had about, well, how do the rooms that end in odd numbers, how don't they crash into the rooms that have even numbers? But it does spell out exactly the steps that they plan to take and what the goals of teachers will be within the hallways. So I think that, you know, there's a lot of answers to a lot of questions in here, but it will take some time for the students and parents to kind of talk through it and look at it together.
Yeah. Right? Any other comments? Alright, so we had a motion. And then we also had a comment about, you know, making them the same. So do we want to revise the motion?
We have a motion.
I guess I did.
You did.
I'm sorry, I thought you did, Laurel, I thought you did. Yeah, so let's revise it to say that we'll accept it with the changes that were discussed.
Okay. And Alicia, you seconded that, right?
I seconded that again.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Okay, passes 7-0-0, thank you. Next, big waiver for student services.
Let me do this over here. Right?
Mm-hmm.
So...
This is just Nicholas Handy speaking. This is just an extension of something that we've already approved. We approved it over the summer at some point. These are just some additional companies that were not on that list originally. Things that, things that we've, student services has encountered since the approval of that letter.
Okay. So we need a motion?
I make a motion to accept the big waiver for student services.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi, and I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Alicia.
I would suggest we modify that to as presented.
As presented.
Oh. If that's okay?
Yeah, so other than just a broad waiver, it's as presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Carries 7-0-0. Last piece is the reopening framework changes.
So we gave a summary of some updates. The majority of updates are either clerical or for consistency purposes, you know, after making some prior changes. It, you know, there was some contradicting within the document, so we just cleared that up to the intent of what we originally had. There are a couple significant changes here that I want to go over.
Yes, please.
One is just a helpful change on page 12. The, there's some times that have been put in there, the proposed last day of school was added. And also, which is just what was on the calendar, and also the start and end times for the schools. So those, we thought that was some important information to put in there. The, in page 18, lots of questions came our way about when can, yes?
I'm sorry, could we show page 12 so that audience can see?
Yeah, of course.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just...
Oh, no, it's alright, it's... Okay, so you can see that those the bottom one was what was already approved by the school board, and then the other one was what we communicated a little bit through email regarding the staggered cars and walkers and buses and so forth at the schools. If we, I would say, I mean, once again, tents changes, I think that a significant change was page 18. I think this was meant to be helpful.
Are you talking about the simultaneous or what?
No, we're looking for instructional segments.
There we go.
So instructional segments was new information, the other, the simultaneous is just a, you know, definition, you know, clearing up things. Not really a huge change, just making it more consistent and understandable. The instructional segments, when can I switch to either remote or when can I switch to back to school if we want, if parents want to make changes? And so these were just some very clear marks that elementary and secondary could agree upon. And they really go by the secondary quarters. I thought that would be helpful, there's, that was, yeah, a frequently asked question that, you know, we need to get
Addressed.
Addressed, yep. Page 27 and 28. That's where, and even page 27 and 28 actually make for a lot of the other changes that are in the document, like just words here and there, because it's such a significant shift. So you can see that it's all yellow. Basically, this was the procedure, what we changed here was the procedure for when the staff are either symptomatic or asymptomatic. And so again, you know, thank you to a couple of the nurses who brought this to our attention right, you know, very quickly, when the changes were made with DPHS. DPHS, the group that's going to be doing the contact tracing, the group that's going to be informing us as we get information as to should we be closing down a room, should we be closing down a wing, a school, a district, or what have you. And they're providing that service to all schools in the state. This right here is their procedure. So it took a little while to kind of break it down, I mean, this is a shortened version of the procedure. And if we pass this tonight, we will have a next step that we'll have to do, which is changing the flow chart of this procedure. But this was really more or less, we had, what it does is this strengthens it. It makes it clearer. We had a pretty loose, I would say, you know, approach before where if someone feels ill, they go home, but the next day they feel great, you know. Again, if you're feeling ill, we're talking about new symptoms, things that are very different from yourself, and if you have allergies, that's a different story. But this certainly, new information is contradictory to some of the old information we had. This is the most up-to-date and now is the most consistent approach that is being done in the state of New Hampshire.
Ruben, can I just point out there's a typo on this page?
Yes, absolutely. Which one?
Nick, can you scroll up to the any yes responses indicate the onset of new symptoms?
Oh, not systems, it should be symptoms. Yep.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple other changes. But those, those were the big ones. That one was certainly the biggest one. And like I said, after this, we will have to make a new flow chart for this. It kind of answers some of, some parent questions when they look at the kid, the child flow chart and then the teacher flow chart and seeing why there were differences. This aligns them a little bit more.
Okay. Any other changes that need to be pointed out as being significant?
We define, I mean, we have some definitions. Some people were asking about what the word simultaneous meant, so on page 17 and 18, we put a definition in there. Just some tents changes in several areas like page 13, page 18, a bunch of them, because we've already done it.
Right.
Because the document says you will do this. The, I guess, a remote handbook change, because we said that we were going to have an elementary remote handbook and a high school, middle school remote handbook, but it's all one handbook. It's a district handbook, so that, that was inconsistent at that point. So again, most of these were for consistency purposes. And this one was because it was the most recent update.
Guidelines, yep.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so we need a motion on these changes for the framework?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the framework as presented.
Thank you, Heidi. You need a second?
That's me.
Alicia.
Oh, sorry, Alicia. So sorry, Alicia. Thank you for making the motion, Alicia. I need a second. John?
Just wanted to ask about the the change on page 33 to say the individuals and not desks are six feet apart. Was that because desks couldn't be six feet apart, or how do we know how far apart the individuals are?
It's the measurement from face right here to face. And so rather than, the importance of the guidance that we have from the CDC is people, not items.
Things.
And so we were, that was a consistency factor and also a clarification. Please.
How would we know if people are leaning one way or another, or standing up straight, or is that just?
Well...
I think, I think, from a planning perspective, John, what we would be looking for is if we have marks on the floor, they're six feet apart. We're assuming that people stand up straight. If desks, we're measuring from middle of the seat to the middle of the seat, so we assume they're sitting there. We can't control the motion of everybody. So when we, we're talking about planning purposes and we're talking about space distance. We're basically talking face to face, because that's the trend, that's how the virus transfers.
So it's sort of like a maximum distance as opposed to a minimum distance?
I'm sorry?
So is it sort of like a maximum distance, the six feet, as opposed to a
The six, the six feet has to do with close contact. Okay, they define close contact as being within six feet for 10 minutes or more. So that's where the six feet comes from.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, there's, so there's some research that's online about three feet, six, well, most of it, most of the world deals with meters, right? So one meter, two meters and so forth. The majority of countries using one meter social distancing, that's important to have. We choose, I think it's the US and a lot of places, we're using the six feet mark. And then there's the UK that uses two meters. The majority of, you know, Europe is using one meter or 1.5 meters. Based upon the research that's out there.
So you're saying that the six feet is actually a high number, so therefore it's not really a concern?
Well, on this, no, I'm just giving some facts about what, you know, other countries are doing. But the six feet, the reason why we so chose six feet was because the CDC had indicated that and I think a couple of the other groups had said that six feet was the social distancing, so
That's the recommendation.
That's what we're putting in, if we can get it broader than six feet, you know, we're making it, you know, more than six feet. If you look at, I mean, I don't have a, I didn't have a measuring tool with me, but I can eyeball it pretty quickly with that kindergarten class, for instance, you know, they're probably depending where the, you know, they could have been like eight, probably 10 feet apart, some of them, but that's a that would be a max.
Well, and I think also the guidelines say six feet for, if you can't social distance, you know, that, that if you need the mask, if you can't social distance, social distance is considered six feet.
Yeah, and yeah, the guidance does say they recommend three to six. Three to six is what they recommend, we chose six.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to ask, because I know kids like to lean, you know? And they're going to be in classrooms 30 minutes or 45 minutes or whatever.
Sure.
I actually think like this one. Face down.
Face down.
If you're older kids.
That's the older kids.
Okay, so I had Alicia. You made the motion, right? But I didn't get a second, so I need someone to second, accepting the reopening framework changes as they're stated. Okay. Patty? Patty, you said second. Thank you very much. And are there any other questions or comments before we take a vote? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Ask is seven zero zero. Thank you. We're on to community, no, community committee, pardon me, updates.
Yeah, so we originally discussed doing, just kind of me talking about some communication committee related things. I'm happy to still do that since the time that you and I talked a, a finance committee meeting and a facilities meeting were planned and happened. So I don't know if we also want to entertain those groups as well, or if we want to wait till the next.
I would just assume yes, do that if we can. But if you want to start.
Yeah, of course.
Then, because that's what was on the agenda. And then those who are going to report for finance and facilities would be on deck.
Yeah, again, this is Nicholas Handy, in addition being the school board secretary and also the communications coordinator for the district. We haven't actually met with the communication committee yet since, you know, the last time we reported out a little bit ago, but a lot has happened on the communications front, so figured I'd kind of let people know. The goal would be, I'm going to be reaching out to the communication committee and trying to convene a meeting either mid or late September. So if any communication folks are listening, you know, I'll be sending out that email shortly. So obviously, we're going to meet, we're going to discuss some year end things. That meeting's been pushed back from the summer because of all the things that were happening with helping with reopening, got the frameworks and things of that nature. So one of the big projects being worked on right now is the website. We're currently working on branding efforts for each school, really trying to solidify logos, colors, things like that, trying to get a good template for all of our, you know, website stuff moving forward. That's going to be one of the things that we'll discuss at the communication committee. I've already gotten, received some feedback from administrators as to, you know, what they'd like to see out of their individual school websites. Because one of the things that we are going to have is a district website, but also instead of having school pages, we'll have school websites that'll have their own URLs. They'll link to the district website, it'll be their own component. So obviously, those all need to be, you know, school color coded, we need to have our logos and whatnot. And then also just working on the framework of what we want to see in those individual dropdown menus to make sure that they're most accessible to each school and to the broader district. Another big effort that we're working on communication wise is just really trying to make sure that we can communicate effectively to our families. You know, I feel like we've been doing a pretty good job of that over, you know, the past six or so months and, you know, even before that, but really, you know, focusing on some COVID guidelines and moving through this process. But one thing we're really trying to work on is unify some of the programs that we have that collect information and distribute information. So currently, we use School Messenger, which is also this company that's going to be doing our website and our app for us. We use School Messenger to communicate our all call system. What we're going to hope to do within the next month, couple of months, is create a streamlined system in which we can take people's contact information from web to school, and then we can use that to create custom lists in School Messenger so that we can communicate at one time, sending out an all call if needed, an email, working on enrolling some sort of text message service for those who want it, and then also being able to put it up on the website and social media. So we would be able to develop one message and send that to all of those different platforms instead of, as we do right now, where it's all independent pieces that get worked on. And then the other component that we'd be able, that we're working on trying to do is to look at web to school in a way that we can perhaps allow access to parents so that they can update their own contact information. Because one of the problems that we do have is that we have issues where people say, I haven't received that email, I'm not on whatever list, I'm having some sort of issue. But if we can, you know, have that web to school connection for families, they could actually input their own contact information, make sure it's up to date, and then we can pull that directly from. And because of how web school is set up, we can, you know, say only send something out to 10th graders or only send something out to a school. And we can give our administrators access to these same programs so that they can do school specific, send out some information. And then, you know, since we're working all these integration projects together, the thing that we'd really like to do down the line is also streamline our registration process so that that can also be a component that works its way into this. So this will be, you know, kind of a beginning to end where you can start with School Messenger, work your way into the communication components of, or start with web to school, move to School Messenger, and then we'd be able to have a greater level of control in our delivery of messaging. We can also down the line do forums through that, we can do templates so that we make things look a little more unified and nice, you know, branded by each school. So I think those are kind of the main things that I'm thinking, that I'm thinking of right now. I mean, also, you know, we do have our current website that we still want to keep update, up to date. So working on, I try to at least once a week go in and put in a couple more answers to the, on the frequently asked question page. You know, we're, we're still getting questions from people, which is great because then we can help provide answers. But what we do is, you know, I obviously get the questions sent to me. I then have to work with, you know, the appropriate administrators or teams of people to, you know, get that right answer. Because if it's as simple as pulling it from a certain source we've already developed, I can work on that answer, but I obviously don't want to speak for any school or department or anything like that. So those are in development. And then also just updating things like, I'm working on going through and updating the SAU directory to make sure that all our staff members are in there properly. So those are the main points.
All right. Thank you very much.
Happy to, happy to take questions.
Communication? Tom?
Nick, that's really okay, that's great. Well, are you working with anybody else on the, on the board or, or on the staff as, you know, with this?
So it really depends on what effort. I mean, obviously, when it comes to something like working on an integration of web to school, I'm by no means an expert or the person that has the most access to that. So I'm working with Mike Cotton in IT, I'm working with Adele, because they're the people that have more access to that. A couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation with School Messenger, where all, or not, sorry. I had a conversation with School Messenger a couple of weeks ago, then all three of us had a conversation with a web to school representative. So we're working together because I don't, I don't want to do any of this in a vacuum if I'm not the expert on it. So I'm not, I'm not just pushing forward and just changing things. It's really just working with the people who actually deal with these things so that we can actually, you know, we, we talk at the board level about streamlining and about getting less products and about having our products function as best they can. So a lot of it's just kind of sitting down, having conversations and looking at, you know, what are we, what do we have and what can we use it for that we haven't already? You know, for example, we're, we're paying even more money now for School Messenger products because we've, we've done the website and the app integration, which we're working on. There are some teachers in schools that use an app called Remind. School Messenger has a, an app that is very similar that we're working to implement that would develop additional integration into the things that we're already doing. So rather than it being a separate application and just a different tool, we're getting the same performance out of something that links into the systems that we're already using. I don't believe I'm directly working with anybody on the board, although there are, I believe there's what, two of you on the communication committee?
Yeah.
Is it Alicia and Heidi? So there are two members of them on the communication committee, so obviously they're made, aware of all these, you know, things that we're doing, you know, for them. When we do have this next communication committee meeting, one of the things I'm going to be doing is presenting a report that looks at the communication plan that we have. It kind of offers a year review of everything that I've done and everything that everybody else has done related to that plan. I would really hope that we can start working on an updated plan because obviously, our plan was very focused on meeting certain date milestones. So obviously, we need to put more milestones in. And I would also like to get to a point where our communication plan is more of a, you know, something more like the framework, something more like a guidebook where it's more, that is the plan. And then we can, from there, also have, you know, goals and things that we need to work on as kind of a separate or an additional document.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. Finance?
The finance committee met last Friday. We reviewed items that were on the agenda, including the MS twenty five, the DOE twenty five, the authorized signers, and the retention of unassigned fund balance, which the board voted on. We also reviewed the six thirty budget summary and the individual line item budget reports.
All right. Questions for finance? Comments?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, finance. And facilities?
Facilities did have a meeting today. We did not discuss every single item on our tracking list. We focused on items pertinent to opening school and for planning for a budget season, including developing scope of work for playing fields at RMS and the high school, getting our forester to work at RMS in cooperation for some parking lot enhancements, and checking the status of the contract execution with our architect engineer. We need that contract executed so we can move forward with things like color palettes so that the website and the logos and everything goes together, right? But also, perhaps more importantly, things like bathroom upgrades for all buildings and other such needed work.
All right. Any questions or comments for facilities? Nope. All right. Thank you all. So we're on to the second public comments. So I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, I got a couple of things that are queued up. I also have a couple of people that want to speak. So I guess we'll take the people that want to, you know, speak out loud first. Maybe one more?
Sure, yep.
All right, so first we have Mark Haley.
Thank you. In response to the board's statement earlier this evening, I appreciate the comments, but based on the number of texts and emails I have gotten just since it was made, it did not do anything to alleviate the concerns of the staff. It talked about how teachers were listened to during the ad hoc committee, but our teachers who are on the ad hoc committee have stated to you and to us that their opinions were not taken into account. It talked about considering our teachers' safety, but it said nothing about making any accommodations at all for them to continue teaching while protecting their families. It did not address the fears that teachers have shared other than to say that they were heard. It does nothing to help your staff members who have been here for decades, who are being forced to choose between their jobs and their families. I appreciate the words, but without action to back it up, they are just words and it feels hollow. Your teachers are hurting and they are scared and they need to see results, they'll listen to, not just hear you say that you care. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mark.
All right, Laura Harding?
Thank you, Laura Harding Jeffrey, I'm also a JRMS teacher. The board's earlier statement mentioned helping our great teachers. But if any of our great teachers are immunocompromised or have children with needs that will not currently be met returning to school, so they need to choose to remote learn, or if they happen to have parents that they cannot now see due to risk of exposure and protecting their safety, are our teachers being helped? Is having teachers use all of their sick time if exposed to COVID and told to quarantine helping them? There are many great teachers that have already left, and I fear more will go because these stakeholders aren't being considered and don't feel like they're being heard. Please also know that there are many classrooms so jam packed that student chairs and desks are up against walls, poles, cabinets, or even the doorway to the classroom. Some desks are so far away from a whiteboard, even with perfect vision, I'm not sure how a child will be able to see what they're trying to be taught. Also, please know that there are many classrooms that have rosters larger than a non-COVID year. I'm happy to post photos or a link to a photo, rather, in the comments because I can't paste the photo in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
All right, we seem to be out of folks who have raised their hands for now. Do you want me to go to either text or chat? We have somebody, Deanna Wilson, hand raised. So Deanna?
Hi, Deanna Wilson from Ringe. I am a bit concerned that I'm hearing that staff is leaving, but I don't see any resignations on this agenda or last, the last one. Could you shed any light on that?
There were some on the 24th, the last agenda on the 24th.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Yeah, something from the chat or from text would be fun.
Just trying to see where to start. All right, so we have one from Tina Stevens, special educator at JGS. I have concerns that class sizes and sheer number of students at each school in our district is not conducive to guidelines from the CDC. I know we are trying to make this work and I will work to do my best to educate work with the special needs students in my school, as well as the wonderful staff. It seems our district is unique in its decision to use this hybrid model. I am concerned about the large number of students moving through the schools when we could have gone with a hybrid model that allows for smaller class sizes by having a split model with half of the number of students in each classroom each day. I know that at my school, there are some classrooms with 14 students, others only with 10. Will teachers be used throughout the data monitoring, these numbers of students moving through the hallways? It seems that may be taking place of valuable learning time. And she's a, she lives in Key.
Thank you, Tina, for your comments.
Christine Leffler of Ringe to capture asks if the new framework will be sent out as well as the approved guidance.
I can link something in a statement later on.
Okay. All right.
So Rebecca de Grand Pray Jeffrey, members of the ad hoc committee in classroom, she's a member of the ad hoc committee and a classroom teacher. In the CDC schools, considerations for general readiness and action planning tool, it states that, quote, space eating at least six feet apart and turns, intern desks in the same direction. And she provided a link which the board members will be able to see.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. Is there any text?
I do have a text which I can reference. So this is a text message that came in, Anne Marr of Ringe. She asks, can I ask how iWave installation has gone and how will we be testing their effectiveness? Also, is there a way for people who are watching the meeting over Zoom to be able to see who is speaking? The expectations for children who are remote learning is that the video will be on for the whole live meeting. I think that if we're holding them up to that expectation, we need the school board to do the same. I can just address that real quick, just in the fact that how we have things round and out. This is our second meeting where we're in public. We don't currently have anybody here with us except for, you know, the board members. We're working on technology to try to be able to, you know, accommodate the best needs both in the space and digitally. Right now, we, you know, have the audio good. We're working at getting, you know, some sort of solution to the video feed. Unfortunately, when you have this many computers in the same room together, you tend to have some issues to get feedback, problems. So we're working on camera technology to be able to make it so that people can see as well. Are you going to read a couple more?
If you have a couple. We've got about five minutes.
About five minutes? So going back to the, oh, we got a couple of people queued up to raise their hands, so I'll go to them next and then we can go from there. So Anniki Cooper?
Yes, hello. My name is.
Yes, hello. My name is Anika Cooper. I live in Peterborough, New Hampshire. I teach at Jaffrey Grade School, first grade this year. I will be in person. I just wanted to bring up to the board and everyone's attention how many children have gone to college and are now coming back. My friend texted me, someone in her neighborhood was at college for two days, and there's 13% of the students at that college have the COVID, so they're sending everyone back. And my other friend's son came back last week. His school has hundreds of cases, so they closed down. These are all people now in our community who may test negative, but may not necessarily be quarantining, so it's like dust in the air. I, I plan to be very vigilant of being six feet apart and taking all precautions. But I just wanted to be aware that everybody knows all these college students are now back after going. Thank you.
Thank you, Anika.
All right, now we have David Dustin.
Hi, thanks, Nick. I just wanted to make one quick point of clarification to a comment that was made about rosters at the middle high school. Just a point of clarity that, at this point, the rosters have not been activated for anybody to see, because we're still continuing to make some adjustments for remote classes. Some teachers have accessed what's called the RTI desk to see their rosters through that particular lens. However, we have made sure to let teachers know that that particular lens is not accurate. It only takes into account the RTI things that have been translated over. And looking at the rosters tonight, just because I was concerned of the, the potential comment that was made, I can confirm that with the exception of two live French classes that have some adjustments still needed, all classes are below 18 for all in-person sections, and remote sections are averaging around 23 or so. So we are still well below sort of a normal year in terms of individual classes. And if any teachers had concerns about their class rosters once activated for them to see, we would, of course, you know, discuss that with them and be happy to support clarification and supporting their needs. So just wanted to make sure that that was pretty clear out there, that those rosters have not been shared yet with staff, and the only access available is not an accurate listing.
Thanks, David. About three more minutes, so if there's another, another person.
Yeah, we don't have any more people that have raised their hands. I do have probably more, you know, chat comments than we have time for.
Okay.
Do you want me to take?
If there's one that doesn't, that addresses something we haven't already heard.
Okay.
How many are there? Why should we even call?
Well, we only have a flip rule policy.
All right, so. The next one would be from Charlotte Elwell. She lives in Keene and teaches eighth grade science at JRMS. She's providing a link to the board. I just said I would like to point out that the CDC is not vague in its recommendation of six feet between ceilings and desks, opposed to six feet face-to-face. So that's, again, something the board can look at.
Okay.
We have Deborah Eni, Parisville RMS teacher. As a member of the ad hoc committee, I agree with Mark's statement. We did not write the reopening guidelines, but were used for research, and many of our recommendations were ignored. We do not feel safe, we are not protecting, we are vulnerable teachers.
Thank you, Deb.
And I would say that it's come up in a text message and a couple other places. There are people that have asked company, there was the point made about resignations that have left. I do have that number, if you wanted me to share it.
It's public knowledge.
Yeah, so if you, if you look back at our agendas, and then also our meetings, and it's just because, you know, sometimes things are added after the fact to the consent agenda, you can find the, you know, the information on people who have resigned and retired. But in terms of looking through, you know, information on people who may have cited a reason, we have seven total who have either resigned or retired due to a COVID-19-related reason.
Thanks, Nick.
And Nick, are those GREA members, or is it?
No, they're not.
Of GREA, JRSSA?
It's GREA, JRSSA. I think there might be one that is not affiliated with either, and that's just a pure
Okay. Thank you very much.
Number of staff members in general.
Nick, is also a custodian in there?
Yeah, there was a custodian, and there were a couple of teachers, a school counselor, a few others.
Okay. That's our 15 minutes. Thank you. On to board matters.
I'd like to say something.
Yes. Charlie?
I'm listening to the inputs that we, in comments, public comments. And I think it's important that people understand that there's a lot of untrue statements that are being made. The problem the board has is that these items cannot be discussed while we're negotiating with JREA and JRSSA. It's unethical, and if we were to do so, we wouldn't be bargaining in good faith. So it bothers me that there's a lot of assumption, and a lot of untrue statements, and we can't respond to them.
Thanks, Charlie. Any other?
I have a request from the board, if at all possible. I have had a couple of inquiries regarding teachers needing or wanting to have their kids come to the school district, if possible, during this timeframe, to be students, or to, you know, perhaps remain in the district if they've, you know, down a way, as this is, you know, there's hardships and so forth. I would like the board to consider allowing us to move forward on a case-by-case basis, you know, to have a conversation with me, to see what the needs are relative to teachers who have, or, or staff who have kids that they want to, it would be helpful to have them coming to our district instead. You know, obviously, we got to look at space and so forth, but if we could move in that direction, I think it would be helpful.
Okay. So we need a motion? Yeah, I was gonna say, if we, I mean, he's asked for this from the board, so we need a motion, and then we can have discussion.
I make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to discuss opportunities that teachers may need for alternative learning of their children in our district, given the situation right now, to work.
Well, subject Patty's motion.
Right. Could we, could we extend that to staff? Not just?
Not just teachers, but the staff?
Yeah, I misspoke. Sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion from Patty, and a second from Alicia. And discussion, once the board?
Thanks for the clarification. What, my staff, are you sending it to staff? What does that mean?
A JRSSA member, SAU employee who is not a member of...
Right, not just GREA members, but, right.
People employed by the SAU.
People employed by the district.
The district. Any thoughts about this? I know.
So this, so.
Laurel?
So we are, we are delegating this authority to the superintendent. Because typically, the board makes the decision regarding district children coming to our schools.
Right.
Is there a condition where we would like the superintendent to come to us?
Such as maybe a high-needs situation?
A high-needs situation.
So this, we're delegating when it's a, I'll just call it a no-brainer, when, when it's...
When the conditions are...
When the conditions are favorable in terms of class size and capacity, and...
Right. When it's not going to present a hardship to any of our own. John?
So would you still come back to the board and tell us that this was something that you...
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. I think that can be a condition as well, to make sure that the board is apprised of...
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
So can we somehow revise the motion for the statement's name?
It was so good to start with.
No, you don't need to say it out loud negatively.
To incorporate the conditions that we discussed in the last five minutes.
Okay, Charlie. All right, so we had the motion from Patty, we had a second from Alicia, we had a modification based on our discussion. Let's take a vote. Those who are in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye? And those who are opposed, and those who'd like to abstain? All right, motion carries 700. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, future items. We still have the, an update on technology. I mean, we had it, was it last, two, two weeks ago, when we had our regular scheduled meeting? We had a little bit of an update then, but at some point, there will be.
Just to keep it on the forefront.
Right.
I can, I mean, I can tell a little bit more of an update on having to do with technology.
How about Otis?
Yeah, Otis is almost entirely set to, for us to take the next step.
Could you just remind everyone?
Sure, Otis is the learning management system that the school district has adopted. Spending a lot of time putting it, I mean, we've had a couple of teachers working on putting in curriculum into it, but also, all the standards, but also, Adele has been, had, they had, they expected quite a robust amount of data to be put in there. We have to do it in a very safe way, puts a little bit of time, you need to be accurate. So that's where we're at right now, just about done with that. The hotspots, we continue to look at the best way to get hotspots that are actually going to work properly in different areas of the community. So Mike saw that, he has some good prospects. And, you know, but those are, those are two big items.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Any other things for future? Okay. Well, then I'm ready to take a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you, Patty.
One second.
Thank you, Alicia. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.